Good evening, I'd like to bring the April meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call please, Mr. Caldwell?
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Tietzke? Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Kuduski?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Kuduski, may we have the invocation? The flag is up in the air as well?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Intermodal District. And grant to the students who made their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the student reports from Matt Klaver and Abby Moro?
At Intermodal School on March 25th, they held their annual career day hosted by Mr. Seth Headless Salucci, the guidance counselor. Peakers from our local universities, industries, local businesses, including loaned parents and graduates. This year's keynote speaker was Mr. Chris Fromm, operations manager and just this jockey from Shaker Sound and Media. Career Day exhibitions gave our students the opportunity to make educated decisions and to set their future goals.
At the kindergarten academy, the production of a year of frog and toad was a joy to behold. The boys and girls under the direction of Mrs. Killian were enthusiastic and full of energy as they resided, sang, and could paint in rhythmic movement. Our wonderful instructional assistants and classroom teachers also supported the effort of rehearsals and prepping props and scenery. An audience filled with parents and supporters of the students had a wonderful time. On April 10th, students will participate in the annual Jump-a-thon to benefit the American Heart Association. Mr. Mack has been teaching the children about heart health and wellness throughout the year. Parents are invited to join the fun and arrive 10 minutes prior to their child session to volunteer to monitor a station. Also, a big thank you to all who participated in the spring fundraiser. They earned $1,300 that will go toward Earth Day and May Fair activities.
At North School, our elementary students enjoyed a league bowling assembly, and our middle school students enjoyed a day of fun at ice works for their PBIS rewards. On March 10th, we held our annual faculty versus eighth grade hockey game. Faculty beat the eighth grade eight to three. The gym was packed with spectators who enjoyed snacks provided by their eighth grade dance team.
At Prospect Park, they recently finished participating in a thank and officer project. Our students decorated and or wrote a message to police officers thanking them for their support and protection. Our students completed nearly 200 of these cards, which we distributed across the state to all police officers. Prospect Park School were the winners of this year's dodgeball tournament, taking both the student and staff tournaments. And the Prospect Park Homeschool organized a hugely successful bingo night with dozens of prizes for a sold-out crowd. The students, staff, and families had a wonderful time.
At Tinnickup School, we are conducting our PSSA assessments. All students in grade three through eight will be taking language charts and math tests. Students in grade four and eight will also be taking the science PSSAs. On April 25th, the eighth grade class will hold their annual car wash. Come out and support the eighth grade and get a clean car in the process.
At the high school, the world language, the annual world language festival took place on Thursday, March 19th, and was a great success. The event was better than ever, which has a large turnout by staff, student, staff, and community members, as they all came together in a new location in the gym. Abundant examples of student projects flew through around the world, and student-run games and activities were enjoyed by all. And the performances by students, staff, and all three administrators were impressive and entertaining. The world language department is so pleased to host this event and ordered to showcase their students' work and can't wait to see everyone there again next year. Also, the annual moth rock was held on March 11th. Student council raised $1,300 for their scholarship fund. Student council is also happy to welcome back Audra McGocklin, former student and voice contender for the show. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Mr. Kuduski, do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Zerdoeby.
Zerdoeby, 200 Palat Avenue in Tinnickup Township. Item number 16 and 17, which is the bond, how much is the, uh, the cure refunding?
I believe it's 7.9 million.
7.9 million?
I'm sorry, we're not, we are taking that bond for the Prospect Park H-back site and also the entrance. So there is, I believe there's a motion for refinancing some bonds, and then there's a separate motion to move us forward in securing money for that project.
Okay, so refinancing?
Yes, is one, one issue?
And how much is that?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. I think at that point, 8 million.
Eight million, and then an additional bond for 7.5?
Yes, approximately.
And just, because this is the refinancing of the 2010 bond, which was a refinancing of the 2005 bond?
We have to, let's say, while the iron is hot in terms of these interest rates being so reduced, it saves the taxpayers money.
Well, let's find out if that's true. The refinancing of a bond is only profitable if the principal is paid down. Now, I asked at a number of bond financing meetings whether the bond that you're taking, going to refinance, whether the interest is being paid upfront, and that the bond itself, the amount of money that the district borrows, is going to be at the back end, which means that you pay up all the interest, or a lot of the interest, and less of the principal in payments made for the years that you pay it, and then you say, oh gee, we can save money and refinance. So you have a bond representative here. I'd like him to address that issue at some point in time, if you're going to vote on this tonight. Number 5.2. At this special meeting which you held for one issue, which was a split-dollar life insurance premium policy in the amount of $1,360.89.
Yes.
I asked you if the name, and the name of that person is David Rundsky. Is that person employed currently with the school district?
Uh, all of the people that are involved in this split-dollar policy no longer work with the district, although there are former employees at the district.
That's correct. So the board at the time when they issued these split-dollar policies, so that we're continually paying for this benefit that, which should never have been issued in the first place.
I agree.
And so I just want to comment on my representative at the time, Mr. James Penn, who questioned it and said that it was not a good idea, and I think to now, that special meeting actually proves that. Because if they're not doing anything in the district, and we're paying their insurance policies, gee, everybody in the school district as an employee should get that benefit, and then they may leave and they may go into other districts, and we're left paying with the insurance policy that we're not, the only way that we're going to get the benefit back is if they die. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Well, Mr. W., if I may say, this board unanimously supports the position that if we had to vote on split dollar, we would not enter into those contracts. So this is something that's been in the district for about 15 years that we have to deal with. So what we're trying to do is to protect the financial interests of the district in this deal that was made 15 years ago.
And number 18, which is settlement agreement with the airport. Now you had a Interboro School District and a CEP agreement, points of interest that you gave out last year.
Yes.
Okay, so are there any major changes to this?
I don't believe that there are major changes. There were some issues about what a cost was or constituted, so they have been, although we were promised our money last summer, it's a year later and we certainly don't have any money, but hopefully we'll be moving forward with it from this point on.
Now, Tinnickup Township held a workshop meeting last night, and I don't know whether Mr. Eckert was there or not. There were a number of people residents there to address the issue, which they were going to vote on at a workshop meeting. Now, $7 billion of construction is going to be detailed in this capacity enhancement program, with an estimated larger regional monetary value of $26 billion over the course of a number of years. Now, for a public body like the commissioners to do it at a workshop meeting and not actually making very much of a, doesn't mean, doesn't give a good demonstration, because a number of people got up, including myself, as to ask, why would you do it at a workshop meeting and not announce it? There were no people from the media there. So it was a very odd way to introduce a motion that was going to have a lot of impact, certainly in the Intermodal District as related to things that you've mentioned in your points of interest, and the county with the overflight of vehicles or aircraft when the capacity enhancement program is completed within the estimated time of 20 years. But, so I just want to ask again, a number of things of our solicitor, because the solicitor is mentioned in the resolution. Does this have to be approved by Delaware County Courts judge or any federal judge?
No, it doesn't. It has to be approved by the FAA.
Okay, so now, that's different from what the Tinnickup Township Board of Commissioners said last night.
It is my understanding that, according to what I've read, the FAA has to approve the deal.
That's, that's, that was also confirmed last night. But as to the courts?
I can answer that part.
So I think you should find that out. I mean, you're going to approve it tonight, no matter what. But I think that one of the reasons why it was done so quickly was that you were mentioning, because your opinion is tonight, they have their meeting last night, and Delaware County Council is going to hold it within next week or two to approve the agreement. But another reason was for political reasons. The commissioners mentioned that the Mayor Nutter and his administration is going to be re-elected, not re-elected, but be replaced, and that they want to get this done.
We're aware of those issues, but they don't retain to the school district.
Well, if you're going to pass it, then it does have a direct effect.
You know, you use the term that they're doing it quickly, but you know, we have, the school district has been without any kind of payment from the airport since 2007. It's been close to $2 million, so I don't think it's been very quick at all. We were hoping to have some kind of revenue from them last summer, that did not happen, so we're very anxious to give some relief to our taxpayers with this airport money from the taxable structures that are there. So we're voting on what we believe is the best interest of the Intermodal District.
Well, no doubt, it's going to go through. Something is going to go through. You're going to have to vote on something.
Yes.
But the manner in which it is presented to the public has been, is questioned. So I just wanted to bring that up to you, and at least you know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. W.
Ms. Kuduski, can we move on to motion 5.1, please?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on March 18th, 2015 be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 5.2, please.
Motion that the following minutes of the special meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on March 30th, 2015 be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. Mr. W. was correct that this meeting was specifically for voting on making payment on a policy that was about lapse with the split dollar. I was on the board at the time, I wasn't on the board when this went through, but I've been on the board for 12 years, and this constantly is coming up. And the fact of the matter is that no one is in agreement except the board that approved it back then, the superintendent who pushed for it back then. So we are trying to find what we legally can do, you know, if this is an improper policy setup. But it was only four administrators at the time, and since then, there are only eight administrators that are retired that have this policy out now. And fortunately, unfortunately, the policy that was going to last, if we didn't make the payment April 6th, you mentioned the name D. Rundsky, she passed away this past Sunday. We would have had a pad that insurance up front. So with that said, we're doing the best we can with what we have inherited. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Any other additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Serini, our solicitors report?
Mrs. Howard, this month, my office has been providing consultation on this split-dollar life insurance issue, review of board policies, special education consultation, and also consultation on issues surrounding the sunshine.
Thank you, Mrs. Serini. Motion 7.1, please.
Motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending March 31st, 2015 be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 7.2, please.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $5,147,211.44 be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 7.3, please.
Motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Kuduski, do we have any correspondence?
No, Mrs. Caldwell.
Thanks. We'll move on to committee reports. I will bid the finance, I'll be giving the finance meeting on Monday, April 6th, board met for the finance meeting, board met. We continue to work on our budget for next year. We still have a lot of moving parts to it, and as we get closer to the dates, we'll have more definitive information. We also are approving, or let's say, we're approving, there's a real estate for those taxpayers that pay on a monthly installment. We're pushing the mark up one month so that the last payment does not fall during the holiday season. We thought that this would be better for our taxpayers, working the evening for them. So we did change the dates. We'll be informing our taxpayers via letter and also on the tax bill that will be coming out at the end of June into July. We also are going to approve this month a food service contract. Last year, we have a contract with Chart Wells. We're happy with Chart Wells and are extending that contract for another year. Also, motion, I believe it's 5.1, it is meal price increases for next year. This is in compliance with the federal government. Federal government gave us a few years in order to bring our prices up. I believe the elementary breakfast is going to increase five cents, and then maybe lunch is 10 cents, and I think the most was at the high school for a premium lunch was 50 cents. So we're trying very hard to keep it within the budget of our parents and taxpayers. We also looked at the financial statement reviews, which are available to all board members every month, and we discussed the bond. As I mentioned earlier, we're moving forward with financing Prospect Park, their H-back system. We'll be doing some site development at this building in between Prospect Park and this building to increase some parking, and also there's going to be a new entrance or drop off for our kindergarten students. So that's our next big project in the district. We're moving forward in keeping our buildings up to date and tending to them like they should be tending to. We're also refinancing some of our bonds because of the better rate and it provides savings for the district. So we constantly are looking for ways to save money, but yet provide the best education that we can. I believe that's all for the agenda for finance. As Mr. Eckert was out of town, I also chaired the GBO, so I'll give the GBO portion of it. For operations, Mr. Wolhoff presented the board with some plans for maintenance, uniforms for our maintenance staff. We're still discussing that as to how we're going to go filing for next year, but we will have uniforms. We also are looking at, we're hiring some of the workers. Our summer workers will come from our students at Interboro. We've had a lot of success with them in the past several years. Mr. Wolhoff, the staff has been very happy with their work. We're happy to give them work and benefit from it. So we will be hiring summer workers. That process will be through the high school. For technology, we're going to have a tech view led by our technology director, Barbara Hegerly, for, I believe it's 12 teachers, and she decided we will be teaching that course yourself. Also, we will, we were presented with a plan to replace our updated laptops and also our laptop parts, so that technology changes so frequently, we'll be leasing these, which will also be saving us money and keeping us up to date. Some of our laptops are seven years old, so we're moving forward to make sure that they are more modern. Also, for cooking and instruction, we are adopting a new reading program for K through three, and also we are introducing advanced placement language and conversation at the high school for next year. That's also a motion on the agenda. We had a review of policies. Mr. Criscola, our human resources director, these are policies that we have to bring up to date. They're in compliance with new state regulations for clearances. Our employees will be on, I believe it's a three-year schedule in order to be continually updated. Gone are the days when you get hired in a district and you never have a check again. The state has changed the rules, and now it's every three years. And then we also had first readings for our student wellness program as well as our transportation policy. And I want to say again to thank Mrs. Riley, the administration, and the board for the work that we've done with these policies. It's something that we started three years ago, and we're basically just finishing up this year. So it's been a herculean task, but one that needed to be done to protect us and make sure that we are compliant. Mr. Eckert, would you like to add anything?
Just a couple of things. There has been some issues at the SAP admin complex with the plumbing up there. That, there is an end to that and a repair which will be coming in the next couple of weeks, so the spring season, fall seasons will end in the proper way with the plumbing up there working. I would also like to thank the maintenance crew. They were doing some routine maintenance. If you notice for at least one or two days up there, the bleachers were roped off. Again, the maintenance crew was doing some routine maintenance in another area, and they noticed some issues with the structure of the bleachers. They took proactive action and roped it off. We actually had an engineering firm come in, they inspected it, came up with a repair plan, and as of right now, the bleachers are in good shape. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. Mrs. Floyd, the legislative board, please.
Yes, on April 8th, at the Delaware County Elementary Unit, the legislative council met at 7:30 in the morning, and we had two people from, one was the Senator, Senator Tom McGarrel, and the other one was Representative Santora, join us in our meeting. And we spoke about basic education funding, the benefit of our students, and our schools, and our taxpayers, and we also talked about charter school reform and pension reform, and they, I found it interesting, they knew quite a bit about the topics that we brought up, but there was a lot when we started interreacting and expressing our different concerns or problems in our districts. Our eyebrows raised. Oh, I didn't realize that. Can I have that information? So, which leads me into the next thing. There's an advocacy forum and day on the hill that is going to be April 19th and the 20th, and I intend to go to it. I've already registered, because this is an opportunity to get more information, more background on what is going on in Harrisburg, what they know, what they don't know, and it's a training session for us to learn how to be better advocates. Some of the things that we'll be talking about is Pennsylvania's pension crisis, the inequitable charter school reform to remove inequities within the system, reform the charter school formula for special education, provide adequate, equitable, and fair funding. So along with the legislative principles supporting concepts for priority issues and a template that focuses on the funding challenges for our schools. So it is my job to basically get as much information as to how our school is directly affected by these particular topics, the statistics, and they're going to go over it and show us how to present this to the legislators in a way that it's not offensive, but it's informative. And it seems like more and more legislators in Harrisburg are catching on to the need of having to change things. So I am going to, I am going to the, this forum. There is a cost, but because our budget doesn't allow for board members, we basically used our budget amount, I've decided that I will pay out of my pocket, and hopefully, when we're doing the budget, we'll include additional monies so that board members can get training, not for me personally, but for all board members who are interested in getting additional training. So I will be paying for this out of my own pockets that, you know, nobody gets upset that I'm going to Harrisburg on the taxpayers' ticket. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Mr. Evans for the community college?
Yes, we did have a meeting on March 19th. Several of the topics, the topics discussed included the state budget, enrollments, and dual enrollment, as well as board vacancy applicants. College's 2015-16 budget was approved by the Board of Trustees on March 18th and is submitted tonight for us to vote on in motion number 19. And then the trustee reassignment is here for us to vote on in motion number 20. The college is anticipating flat funding from the state for 2015-2016, and with operating costs continuing to increase, they're projecting to increase their tuition costs by $4 per credit hour, and an overall increase of, I think, 5.72 percent. It doesn't mean there'll be an increase to our school district, because of the Chester Upland School District disposition agreement, there'll be no increase in our contribution to the community college. But it should be noted that that agreement is, next year, 2015-16 is the final year for that disposition, disposition agreement. Then they talked about declining enrollment. There's a 3% decline in enrollment. They're trying to offset that by including more and more programs and working with the school districts and developing a technology-based program that will help feed qualified job applicants into the industrial market in our applicants into the industrial market in our, in our county. So they hope that that'll help offset some of the decrease in enrollment. They're, even with their $4 per credit hour increase and their $4 per credit hour on instructional fees, they're still ranked among the lowest in the state for costs. Last thing, they have a new trustee appointment. I had to fill out a survey of six candidates, which was sent off to the community college and they'll be interviewing candidates for that trustee position on either April 22nd or April 29th. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Harris, the IU.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on April 8th. It was approved to implement an early head start childcare partnerships grant. Also was approved an annual curriculum forum for district curriculum directors and assistant superintendents. Approved an amendment for a contract with the Delaware County Courthouse to increase internet service. Approved to enter into an agreement with Penn College Technologies to, for dual enrollment for the students. Also approved to create a new Apple Systems and Design Program and a new Apple Systems Design Teaching Position at the Delaware County Technical School. Approved a three-year contract with Southeast Delco School District for network service backup. Also was approved for seven students and four adults from the physical support class at Haverford High School to go on a field trip to Camden Riverfront Sharks Game. For more information and news and updates, go to www.dciu.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Harris. I'd love to excuse our student representatives. Thank you very much. Ms. Krajewski, could we move on to motion 10 late?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two, ending on page three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from any board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd.
Yes, 10.2, I can't vote on this because I have concerns. And I have a letter that was written to me by a constituent. And basically, she, in her email, she said that December 2nd, position was posted for the Penn's administrator for the district. The closing date was December 16th. She applied for the position. Her references were checked on December 17th. She waited what she thought was a respectable amount of time before calling the HR department to check on the status of the position. She was told to wait until after the winter holiday.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
I do believe that this is personnel to be discussing this before the board has been informed of this or we've gotten any information. I request that perhaps we want to bring this up in executive session to protect our employees.
Well, to be very honest, this person is an employee and she expressed.
All the more reason.
She expresses concern. She's a constituent of mine, and I have to agree with some of what she says as far as we act, excuse me, there's a process.
I'm disputing that she may have a legitimate, all I'm saying is that I don't believe that this is appropriate because the board has not heard this, the superintendent or the human resources hasn't been able to respond to it. So I think it's really unfair. I'm not saying that it is not legitimate, I'm just saying that I don't think at this time that we should be discussing this.
Well, I think it's unfair that the board finds out at work session Monday, at the end, right before we're ready to leave, that this was going to be an agenda item. And we were under the impression that this was going to be put on hold, which I can't go into the details as to why. But the fact of the matter is, this woman was deceived. She was deceived.
Mrs. Floyd, with all due respect, I think since this is a potential employment issue, this conversation might be better suited for executive session.
As noted before, absolutely. So if you would like to vote against this part or the entire motion is perfectly fine.
On the border, President Holger, this issue is on the agenda. Mrs. Floyd is addressing the issue as she sees it.
Mrs. Floyd is addressing.
Will you allow me to finish?
Yes, may.
Thank you. As the point of order, the public, a public meeting is held so the public can understand just exactly what you are doing. Now, to try to shove it back into the darkness of an executive session and then not allow a board director to speak on the issue is going back to the days what happened when Dr. Seketti left suddenly. So I just want to bring that to your attention and allow Mrs. Floyd to continue. I'd like to hear it.
Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Floyd was referring to an email she received from her resident. We have, we don't have any information on that, any explanation. I'm not saying that it's not legitimate, but I don't think that it's fair to anybody to be talking about this. It's personnel matter for people that are involved in this position. We have Mr. Razzie, did you want to say something, or was that Mr. Ecker?
That was myself. My thing is, she should have worked at a board before this meeting. Don't bring it to the board, don't bring it to the board. Thank you.
When I tried to bring it to, in the executive session, when I tried to discuss it, unfortunately, Mrs. Holger doesn't want to hear what I have to say. So with that said, I waited until now to present it because I, this was a shock, this was a surprise to us, that this was going to happen until work session.
Mrs. Floyd, if you didn't bring it up at the executive session, I was there, I would listen. We all would. Never wore it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we move to vote on this motion? So we are back to motion 10.1. All of those in favor of 10.1, which includes 10.2 and 3, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I approve all except for 10.2 because of the pottery practice. Thank you.
So your vote should be reported that other than 10.2, you vote in the affirmative for this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion passes for all of them, 7 to 1, and all of them except 7.2 for Mrs. Floyd. Let's move on to 11.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed on page four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments on motion 11.1 and 11.2? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 12, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Special Education and People's Services be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 13.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Facilities be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. For the Office of Technology, we have the motion, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Technology be approved as listed on page five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 15, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Finance be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? These are the un-motions that are referred to when I made the Finance Committee report for the lunch prices for next year and also the approval of the food service contract. Any other questions or comments?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Ecker.
Again, it's my same comment as the year before. It's not that the district wants to raise the prices of lunches. We are dictated by the federal government due to the lunch programs to raise the prices just so everybody is aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Maybe we have motion 16, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached resolution number 16. A, expressing the intention of this school district to incur debt for the purpose of financing the capital projects. B, refunding the school district's general obligation bond, bonds, excuse me, series double A of 2010 and the school district's general obligation bond, series triple A of 2010. C, appointing an underwriter in connection with the incurrence of such debt. And D, appointing bond counsel in connection with the occurrence of such debt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments about motion 16? Hearing none, maybe we have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Motion 17, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached resolution number 17, authorizing and directing the issuance of its general obligation bond, series A of 2015, and its general obligation refunding bonds, series double A of 2015, and series triple A of 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mr. Ecker?
I just wanted to verify again why we're taking out the bond and what that money is going to be used for. Again, we are going to upgrade the mechanical, apply, the mechanical systems in the Prospect Park School to bring that up to what we have done in Aurora Tinnicum. We are going to install secured entrances in all of our buildings except for the kindergarten academy right now. They have a system in place right now, but we will be looking forward next year to upgrading that one as well. And also, as stated earlier by Mrs. Holger, to approve the playgrounds in Prospect Park and kindergarten academy to bring them up to code, and also to install a bus loop outside of kindergarten academy for more efficient and safer drop off and some added parking spaces. So that is what we're doing here. We are improving our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, maybe we have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 18, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the addition of an advanced placement literature and composition course to the Interboro High School program of studies for 2015-2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I'm to understand from our discussion the other evening that this will not create a new position, correct?
Mrs. Riley?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I just thought to public shame. Thank you.
And I certainly applaud the addition of an advanced placement course at our high school. I think the more opportunity we bring to our students, the better they are prepared for their postgraduate work.
Any other questions or comments?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Ecker.
I would also like to say that this is a good thing. This is something that we're not actually talking about money for a change, we're actually talking about education, which we are here for. Dr. Ecker, thank you very much for looking into this, along with Mrs. Riley to bring up our students up to par. Every year, the district has a dinner with the top 5% of the class, and one of the issues that come out of that every year is, we actually do have students in this district that actually want more challenging courses. So we are listening out there, not only to the taxpayers, but to the students as well. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. Have a roll call vote, Mrs. Holger, please. Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 19, please.
Motion that the budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016, in the form and amounts presented at this meeting totaling $87,614,791, be hereby approved and adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 21, please.
Motion to approve and authorize the Board of School Directors to sign any and all agreements and documents necessary to resolve and settle outstanding issues related to the Philadelphia International Airport Capacity Enhancement Program between the Interboro School District and the City of Philadelphia, Tinnicum Township, and the County of Delaware. The school district solicitor is authorized to execute the required stipulation for the appropriate court jurisdiction to resolve pending litigation in accordance with the settlement agreement signed by the parties.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments about the passing enhancement program?
Comment?
Mr. Razzie?
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 19, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the following persons as listed to be reappointed to the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June 30, 2012.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, maybe we have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 21, please.
Motion to approve and authorize the Board of School Directors to sign any and all agreements and documents necessary to resolve and settle outstanding issues related to the Philadelphia International Airport Capacity Enhancement Program between the Interboro School District and the City of Philadelphia, Tinnicum Township, and the County of Delaware. The school district solicitor is authorized to execute the required stipulation for the appropriate court jurisdiction to resolve pending litigation in accordance with the settlement agreement signed by the parties.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments about the passing enhancement program?
Comment?
Mr. Razzie?
Mrs. Holger, first I just want to thank our solicitor's office for all of her hard work on this issue, which is probably the most financially important issue that's happened since I've been on the board. I know this agreement spanned, I think, four or five presidents, from Mr. Ecker to myself. Mr. Kelly, who is here to you, and it's glad to see that it's finally being finalized. Thank you for all your hard work. And Mrs. Riley is attending meetings and getting this deal done, so next year's budget will be a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? This is the motion that we have referred to at the beginning of the meeting in question. It has been a long time coming. Our residents have been without any kind, the board has been without taxes from these certain properties at the airport for, since 2007. So it has handicapped us, and we are more than happy to enter into this agreement. Fortunately, Tinnicum, in protecting themselves, protects us as the school district. So we're hoping that this goes smoothly and quickly from here on in. Any other questions or comments? We need a roll call vote for this motion. Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeVittista? I'm sorry. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Shall we go to 22? Before we go to 22, I'd like to...
Before we go to 22, I just want to clarify for motion number 20 with the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees, that's the term ending June 30, 2021, which is kind of a scary date, but if not 2012, it's 2021. We wouldn't need to redo that, would we?
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the settlement agreement between
Inverah School District and Employee, aye.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Motion 23, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the policy provisions as listed in the category of employees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Once again, we discussed these in GBO a few weeks ago. They are in compliance with new state laws for clearances, among other issues. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Motion 24, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies as listed in the categories of Peoples and Operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Any old business before the board? New business? Mrs. Riley, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Holger. I would like to wish good luck to the Inverah High School Theater Department on the eve of this year's musical You're in Town. Shows are Thursday, April 16th, and Friday, April 17th at 7:00, and Saturday, April 18th at 2:00. Tickets are available at the high school office and at the door prior to the show. I would like to congratulate our high school marching band as they will be performing the National Anthem at the PA 8th Annual Walk for the Wounded Warriors, Wounded and Warriors 5K at Rose Tree Park on Saturday, April 2nd. Information is available on our website. Finally, as we get closer to the end of the school year, I would like to remind everyone to please check the calendars on our website for upcoming events. You can also follow us on Twitter for latest district information. I'm also pleased to announce that our Curriculum and Instruction Office and our Technology Department are also now on Twitter, so please follow them as well. Thank you and have a good evening.
Mrs. Riley, I believe that's May 2nd, November 7th for that doc.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Did I say April? I apologize. May 2nd, excuse me.
Any question, I'm sorry, any comments from board members?
Yes, Mrs. Holger.
Ms. Krajewski?
I would just like to remind everybody that the primary election day is coming up on May 19th, and a lot of people think that it may not be a big voting year because it's not governor, it's not president, but there are a lot of local positions that are up for voting, including some board member seats, as well as some local councils and such. So I encourage everybody to please do not ignore these primaries. If you're not registered to vote, you have until April 20th to register to vote, so please come out and perform your civic duty. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members?
Comment?
Mr. Evans, is that you?
Yes, it is. All again, your hand. I just want to clarify one of the, some of the things that went on tonight, motion 10.2. That Monday night was not the first night that that was discussed. We had several meetings concerning several different topics and the need for that position over several months. There were the past couple, like I said, past months, so it was not just Monday night was the first night that we discussed the need for that position or how we were going to fill it. So I wanted to clarify on that. The other thing is on motion number 21, it has been a long time coming. It's probably a long time until, again, we see some action moving on there. The wheels turn slowly, but it will bring some relief to the school district. I wish it would have brought more. Again, we're going to be compensated for the future, but we're not being compensated for the past, just so everybody understands that. So again, it happened very quickly. Mr. Dobie, I guess it did, but it was in the works for a lot of years. So I am glad that it is done, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other board members?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, Mr. Evans, you're absolutely right. We did talk about this before, and we all agreed, mutually agreed, that we would put this off while we were settling another contract, which I cannot go into detail. The fact of the matter is, I apologize to Mr. Phelps and my other colleagues for not bringing it up. As I stated, it was brought up last minute, oh, by the way, by the superintendent. We're going to put this on the agenda. It was not on the agenda initially. It was at the very end, right before we were ready to walk out the door. I was not prepared to be able, I didn't know this was going to happen. I didn't have the information with me to be able to dispute or question or discuss. So therefore, that's why I didn't do it the night of the work session. I guess it kind of runs in with, why weren't we told about this prior to? Why wasn't it on the agenda prior to so that we could have had the discussion? So I apologize to everybody if I offended you, okay? It was a surprise to me, just like it was a surprise to you tonight. The other thing, on a positive note, the Norwood bingo, it was wonderful, absolutely wonderful, what those home and school parents do to raise the money. I don't have the final amount, but it was well-attended. The donations for prizes was fantastic. It was just a great night. The other thing I wanted to say while I'm talking about Norwood, I personally would like to commend, I'm sorry that I didn't mention this earlier when we had, when we started the meeting, we should have, I should have suggested that we have amendment of silence for two people. Norwood had a bad time last week. Mr. Mills and his son and his passing, and Shannon Michaels and her passing, long fight with cancer. I want to commend, I spoke to a lot upon the day of the services, but I want to commend the Norwood parents, students, and the staff for all they did for that family. It was unbelievable, the caring, the compassion, you know, they're to be commended. When we talk about the Inverah family, that's what it's all about. The Norwood people showed that they are a family, and I want to commend them on that. And Mrs. Riley mentioned about the play. Saturday, there is another time at 7:00. There's the 2:00 one and the 7:00 one. And you can't, you, it's a shame for people that don't take the time to go and see these plays and the talent that we have in our district, in our high school. Thank you.
I don't have comments. On Monday, May 4th, 2015, will be Finance Committee meeting, the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the Boardroom at the Administration Building. The next work session of the Inverah Board of School Directors will be convened in the